I'd like to call to order our legislative meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners of February the 24th. If we could please introduce ourselves, that would be great.
Hi, Bridgette Orde, Communications Manager.
Leslie Hervey, Interim Clerk.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Alito, County Administrator.
Thank you. Would you like to introduce yourself? Commissioner Alicia Reese. Thank you, and President of the Commission Stephanie Summeradumas, welcome everyone. We'll start as we always do with a silent prayer, and after the silent prayer, if you could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I would ask that, Bob Rinder is here, our cameraman, and he just recently lost his dad, so if you could say a prayer for him and his family, that would be awesome. Thank you. Amen. Please stand.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendments of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Summeradumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a presentation of Lunar New Year proclamation. Commissioner Dreehouse, would you like to say something about that?
Sure, we have Leo Chan with us. Grateful that you're here, Mr. Chan. He's the Executive Director of the Midwest USA Chinese Chamber of Commerce. His wife Unida is in the audience as well. Welcome to both of you. Appreciate you being here. So, we wanted to recognize this special occasion. We've done it in years past, but I just think it's important to continue to celebrate all the different folks that are here in Hamilton County who, you know, offer their talents, their treasures to this community, and have become part of the fabric of who we are in Hamilton County. And so, Mr. Chan reached out, related to the New Year, and so, we've created a proclamation. We want everyone to take part in reading that, and then hopefully, Mr. Chan will have a couple of things to say about not only the New Year, but the community here in Hamilton County, and really the vitality and the life that they bring as part of Hamilton County.
Thank you, and welcome. I'll begin with, whereas the traditional Chinese Lunar New Year celebration, also known as the Spring Festival, dates back as early as the 14th century B.C., and whereas 2022 is the Year of the Tiger, which is a symbol of great power, capability, and determination, and people born in the Year of the Tiger, here and after called Tigers, are extremely competitive, known for their courage and ambition. Tigers are ambitious, but they're also extremely generous, with a drive to help others. Tigers want to win, but they're also always seeking justice. Whereas the Lunar New Year is celebrated uniquely in many different Asian countries, but regardless of the country, culture, religion, or ethnicity, the day is a time for family reunions, gatherings, reaffirming bonds, and reflection. And whereas the diverse Asian community in Hamilton County is home for many Asian families that have been here for generations, as well as newer Asian immigrants.
And whereas the Midwest USA Chinese Chamber of Commerce, a Hamilton County nonprofit organization, has been hosting the annual Lunar New Year Gala to celebrate this tradition with the business community and in the region. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners, with our county's rich demographic diversity, beautiful parks, friendly and prosperous businesses, many community services, and excellent schools, has provided a welcoming environment for the Asian community to all, to call Hamilton County their home. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners does recognize February 18th, 2022 to be Lunar New Year Day in all of Hamilton County.
Say a few words, and then we'll come down and take a picture with you.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, and it's truly an honor to be here today to receive this proclamation. As the proclamation indicated, Hamilton County has been home to many, many Asian Americans, and many Asian immigrants and families as well. Our chamber is home, is proud to call Hamilton County home, and we're based here, and we cover the entire Midwest, eight states, plus Northern Kentucky and Western Pennsylvania. And we're growing, and we've been very, very successful. And thanks to our community, Hamilton County included, was sustained by members from this community, and we've been celebrating the Lunar New Year tradition for years. And this very past weekend, we had a very, very successful gala, and we have representatives from the White House joining us as well at the gala, and delivered a very wonderful speech to our constituents and friends and community partners. And we recognize our community partners as well at the gala, and we're very, very thankful, once again, for Hamilton County for recognizing this day as we celebrate the Lunar New Year. And go Tigers, and Hootay!
Yeah, Hootay, okay. So next year, though, you have to promise to invite us to the gala?
Absolutely. You're always welcome guests to our gala. Thank you.
So our next order of business, public comments, and I do have a card up here. Mr. Nick Talbert. You have two minutes. Welcome.
I know y'all surprised to see me back.
It's always good to see you.
Um, I've been doing a lot of homework, a lot of homework. I do more homework now than I did when I was in the public school system. But you, I can't believe the information I found. The information I found is so deep, I'm putting together a whole production staff. Uh, I'm bringing the city in, I'm bringing you guys in, and also the Freedom Center. A lot of the history that we've been told is truly a misnomer. A lot of things are going to be changed just because of this map right here. We talking about the indigenous people that was here before Columbus. A lot of people don't even know that the China Bloodline was here also. The biggest things that I want to do is, how can you not, when I went over there to the art museum over there, how can you not have information about the indigenous people, the Indians, which they didn't call themselves Indians, where over 80% of the buildings in this city was connected to them? Matter of fact, the Indians, from what we see in the, a lot of the Indians and the Masons were the same people. That's why they was able to grow up in these high places like that. They were the same people. The languages connected. They did. All the languages, they actually was able to go from Africa to China to Europe, and could speak to each one of them. It's a lot we don't know. And one of the biggest things that I found out too, all Af-Black folks didn't come from Africa. Atlantic Ocean is too deep. It's too wild. It's too brutal. That's why the ships don't even go that way. That's why they don't even fly over there, because of the Atlantic Ocean. Most of everybody comes up, and then they come down. The Atlantic Ocean is brutal. That's why the Titanic sunk, because the ocean is so brutal. So what I'm doing, I'm letting everybody know, I'm going to put together a crew, and we're going to put together a real nice documentary about Cincinnati.
Thank you so much. Okay, I'll move forward. Oh, I have one other, a public comment from Carrie Davis is on Zoom. Hello, Ms. Davis.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. At your last meeting?
Good afternoon, Carrie Davis. Are you there?
Can you hear me? Hello? Hello? Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me, ma'am?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Oh, good. Thank you. Last week, I mentioned to you, requesting that an environmental committee be established, and I think there was a little misunderstanding that the entire purpose of this committee would be in addressing the solid waste issues. And it's not. The Commissioners have over a dozen different committees, including women and girls, oral health, inclusivity, elderly care, and of course, then you have your statutorily required advisory committees. What you do not have, and it's kind of shocking, is you have no environmental committee whatsoever in the county. The city of Cincinnati has a specific environmental committee. We do not have one whose job is to look at the plethora of issues occurring across the county under MSD, under a variety of different programs, to research it and give information to the Commissioners and the boards from the perspective of environmental protection. So I just wanted to clarify for you, as I'm pushing this issue of establishing a committee, that there's far broader need for it than just the Solid Waste Committee, even though that's, you know, a hot issue right now, and that we've never had an environmental committee in Hamilton County, and I think it's time we have one.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the clarity.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. We'll move forward with comments and motions. I'll begin with my comments. Let's see, a few things. I've been attending the TLRC, the Tax Levy Review Committee meetings in the evening on Zoom, and some during the day, as we look at tax levies that are coming forward to the public. You'll be hearing more about that. Also, the updates by the White House, I've been attending those Zoom meetings, and they've been very interesting as it relates to the status of different legislation materials, and also efforts that are coming forward. So, I'll be on one this evening, this afternoon at 4:00. And then HCDC is changing their brand and their name to ALOI, and they presented that yesterday at the HCDC Development Achievement Awards, which I spoke there representing the board. It was a very nice event. And my Chief of Staff, Bishop Hilton, attended the Colrain meeting as it relates to the gun range and closing of the gun range, which there, it's a little bit of a different name, you'll be hearing more about that, but, and they had Colrain residents, they had also, let me say specifically, representatives were there from Senator Sherrod Brown's office, Senator Rob Portman's office, the State of Ohio, two of our Hamilton County Commissioners were there, Hamilton County Sheriff's Department, including, including Sheriff Charmaine McGuffey. Cincinnati Police had representation, and Cincinnati City Council, officers and citizens, as I said, of Colrain Township. And they're calling at the Regional Training Center, and it'll be designed to serve all law enforcement, and finally allow the closing of the CPD Gun Range in Evendale. Okay, and in addition, the friendly wager that we had with Jackson County Executive Frank White, we will be completing that task Saturday at noon. And when the Cincinnati Bengals beat, I said that again, the Kansas City Chiefs, Jackson County Executive Frank White, he made a good friendly wager, and he agreed to wear a Bengals jersey, which he did, and shipped food from one of the great restaurants in Kansas City, Gates Barbecue. So Saturday, this Saturday at noon, we will serve a meal to young men at Youth Advocate Program. Each of the young men will also receive a Bengals jersey. These young men are in a mentoring program at Youth Advocate. They have had some issues and challenges. We selected these young men to remind and encourage them to take advantage of the time they have with the clock of life, that they're very young, they can make, really make a difference in their lives. We believe, like the Bengals, that they are winners too. Okay, just a couple other items. This is the last official day that we will be official, officially celebrating Black History Month, which we talked about. Black history is American history. And so, I talked about the Black Red and Green, which I have on again today, and I just wanted people to know the significance of that. And the blood, the red is for the blood that unites all people of African ancestry together, who shed their blood for liberation. The black is for the people whose existence as a nation, though not a nation-state, is affirmed by the existence of the flag. And the green is abundant and vibrant natural wealth that's in Africa, the motherland. I also said I will let you know about a few more inventions, and just a few, the improved ironing board. In the late 19th century, the ironing board was improved by Sarah Boone, one of the first Black women in U.S. history to receive a patent. She created a narrower curved design, as we have today, making it easier to iron garments. Boone's design morphed into the modern board that we have today. Also in addition, the home security system. African-American nurse Mary Van Britten-Brown devised an early security unit for her own home. She and her husband took out a patent for the system in the same year, and they were awarded the patent three years later. In 1969, home security systems commonly used today took various elements from her design. And we talked about the traffic light, which I thought was just really good, how Mr. Beck brought up about the traffic lights, which goes into what we were saying about knowledge is power, so everybody needs to learn about everybody. And I thought it was just very significant that Mr. Beck, our engineer, came up with the traffic light that he had already researched. And one last, well, two last ones. Refrigerated trucks. Frederick McKinley Jones created a roof-mounted cooling system that was used to refrigerate goods on trucks during extended transportation in the mid-1930s. He received a patent for this invention in 1940, and co-founded the U.S. Thermal Control Company, later known as Thermal King. And lastly, because there are so many more, the automatic elevator doors. Alexander Miles took out a patent in 1887 for a mechanism that automatically opens and closes elevator shaft doors. His designs are largely reflected in elevators used today. So, knowledge is power, so you're welcome to read more. I was looking at, Roughen, what's her first name? Gina Roughen, who we honor for Black History, and she gave us all a book, a Black Cincinnati history book. And I was looking at it this morning, and the pictures and the history, and I thank her so much for giving that to us, and it's just a great book. It's Black citizens in Cincinnati. And it's just a great book about our history as Cincinnatians. You may want to take another look at that. And I have one more item. And I tried to enlarge it. Our printers were getting some new printers, because they're so old, maybe like 30 years old. So we were trying to enlarge, the IT guy was trying to help me, and we couldn't enlarge what I had written. So I'm going to try very hard to read this. And so, I thought about, as I reflected on Black History, which I said is just, this is February, but Black History is forever. And so, I just wrote a little quote, certainly not as eloquent as Dr. Martin Luther King, but I thought about him when you talked about having a dream. And so, I wrote that I have a dream for Hamilton County. I won't read it all, because it's so much more. But I have a dream that there will not be a need for a Black History Month, because Black history is American history. I have a dream that all people will take the time to learn each other's history, because, as I said, after all, my history is your history. I have a dream that people will treat other people the way they want to be treated, because we need to pave roads for the future and not build walls. I have a dream that we will work toward leading our people out of poverty, because living with lack is not something for anyone to wake up to. I have a dream that there will not be a need for a disparity study, because everyone will qualify because of their skill and expertise, not because of the color of their skin. I have a dream that the gates of the gun range will close permanently, because I know it to be true, and also, it's the right thing to do. And remember that dreams are just that, unless you act. So, that's all I have for my comments today. I will go to Vice President Reese.
Thank you. I have several announcements. First, I want to thank those, yesterday, we had a group of students that came from Don Community School. They went to City Hall, and for the first time, came to Hamilton County for Black History Month to learn about county government. And just want to thank my Chief of Staff, Quinton Monroe, for organizing, because we wanted to let them hear from some of our department folks that were around. I want to thank Jill Schiller from the Treasures Office, or talking with the students about what the Treasure Office does. I want to thank Director Michael Patton, who, not only him himself has made history in terms of African-American history, as the first African-American, African-American male, also to be over JFS, in addition to first African-American overall. But him sharing his story, they had a lot of questions for him. It was a real interactive session with him, and it was really good. The kids really could relate to him, and felt the need to be able to ask questions, and he was able to explain all of the different things and jobs at Family Services. That was great. Director Trina Jackson from Reentry was also one of the speakers, and Director, Mr. Robert Bale, from our inclusion and equity, was able to talk about his role and what he is doing here in the county. And it was just great, and I just want to thank, and I had a chance to talk with them as well. And one of the things I was excited about is, obviously, our Youth Employment and Development Office that will soon be launched, where they can have an opportunity to get an internship, a paid internship, and those kind of things, a summer employment. So their ears definitely perked up there, but it was great, great turnout, and they were really engaging with some questions. A lot of them had good questions. I thought that was really good. So, want to acknowledge that. I thought that was great. Also, as was mentioned before, the Town Hall in Colrain Township. We were back at the Colrain Township Senior Center. We were there last year with the 513 relief bus, and got a lot of folks vaccinated, and was able to help people with economic help. In fact, a couple landlords had no idea about our rental assistance program. They was able to sign up at that location. But we got a chance to come back there, and I was one who also attended, myself, as well as my Chief of Staff was there as well, as a number of others that already have been identified that were there. I thought it was a major step in the direction. This is something, dealing with this gun range that's been happening for many, many years, back to my state rep years. But this is the closest that we've ever been to being able to move forward. And so, I was, I was very optimistic in what I heard, some of the concerns that were brought up. I thought the architect was able to address some of those concerns. And so, I think we're moving, and we've got the Township trustees that were there, and they seem to be on board. And so, I think we're moving in the right direction. Councilwoman, Vice Mayor Jam Michelle Lemon Kearney was also there, as well as Councilmember Scotty Johnson that was there, and I'm sure Commissioner Dreehouse will be saying something, doing her turn as well, when she gets her turn to talk about it. But I just was optimistic about it, because I think we're moving in the right direction. I just want to say that, I think the county, we're playing a major role in terms of putting money on the table. We're going to need some other components to come forward, and I have also asked that all hands be on deck. I've certainly asked that maybe the Attorney General, who has funding, possibly could help with this project. The Governor, who has a statewide collaborative, there's funding there. I was there when we formed the statewide collaborative, and there is some funding. So maybe those things, seeing everybody work together in a regional way, can help us move forward. And I've shared those contacts with our Administrator, and I know that he's looking into those options as well as other options, to see if we could go ahead and hopefully close the deal. In addition, I was out in Sharonville, Ohio, at the HCDC conference and event. I got a chance to talk to a lot of the innovative small businesses that were there. I got a chance to meet some other small businesses that our Small Business Program, Grant Program helped. We've gotten out over $6 million-plus dollars, helped over 700 businesses. Some of them were there at this event, and certainly was grateful of the county's program and what we've been able to do. Hamilton County HCDC is changing their name, as was mentioned before. And as someone myself that deals with branding and marketing, one of the things, concerns that I brought up, is that that's fine for them to rebrand themselves as ALOI Development. ALOI Development is what they're going to call themselves. But the Hamilton County, they do our economic development. And just like with Ohio Means Jobs, it's Ohio Means Jobs, and JFS is the operator. And we're not going to apply this year, so we won't be the operator, but it still will be Ohio Means Jobs. And I just believe that in most cities, they have an economic development department. We don't. We contract out. HCDC was fine, because they had the word Hamilton County in it. But I believe that as they're moving in that direction, I've expressed this to our Administrator, Hamilton County has to have a development department, and it needs to say Hamilton County Development. Now, they can be the operator, but the name to the communities should be Hamilton County Economic Should be Hamilton County Economic Development Office and they can be the operator. If you know, if that's the decision of the administration and this board. Small business we have in this budget will have the first ever Hamilton County Office of Small Business. Someone can be the operator, but to the public and for our purposes. For now on, it should be called Hamilton County Office of Small Business. And they can answer the phone. Many people do this all the time. They have multiple contracts. You answer the line Burger King. Then another line McDonald's and they the same company. So they can do that. And I just think it's very important to our, our constituents to have a clear understanding. That deal with us, that they're calling the Hamilton County Economic Development Office. They're calling the Hamilton County Office of Small Business. And we've done the same thing with our branding for our website, five one three relief. You go there, you might have some other people to help you in the backend, but the front end is Hamilton County five one three relief. So I've expressed that to them and I think my understanding of working on it, but I wanted to put that out there. Because I think that's critical as we're communicating with various constituents who have economic development needs. Or they have small business needs and those needs are funded by our county. So I wanted to put that out there. The other thing is the Youth and Development Office. I'm excited to hear more about that. Want to have that get ready to roll out because. Summer will be here. It's time for people to get summer jobs. I want more young people working and doing something constructive. So it's less time to get caught up in the wrong thing. And in addition to that, we talked about having a. Having a fellowship program. So people who are in college, we want them to come back to Cincinnati. When they, you know, mom and dad send them away, they come home for the house, come home. We want them back here. So we have a fellowship program that we put in the budget. That will be similar to the state's fellowship program, but I don't think any county in the whole state has a fellowship program like this. It gives us a way to get people into the system, learning and working throughout our county and then hopefully. Will be the ones that fill these jobs and one day become directors and be over these programs. So I'm excited and want to hear more. About rolling that out in time enough so that the people can start getting, start doing the, the competition of applications. I'm just very excited about that. And then also the one million dollars we put there for seniors. I want to really thank the administration. We do have a program, but I want to know when does it start? Roll it out? What's the telephone number? It will help seniors with their furnaces. Help them with their air conditioning units. And then there'll be a component to help with outreach to make sure that the seniors know about these programs. So. I did read the program, but I want to make sure when is it rolling out? So that we can promote that and all of us, we can promote that and it can be announced because I think that is. Huge a groundbreaking. And then my last piece is. There's an article came out in statewide, it's in the Columbus Dispatch, it's in. I think the Toledo Press and someone tagged me on it. Greg Harris tagged me. He's here in Hamilton County. And it talks about Ohio's was trying to get, get COVID nineteen rental assistant money out. And they talk about the difficulties of the money going to different organizations, nonprofits, and it's not making it to the people. Now, when I first got elected, I've mentioned this, I talked about it. As it related to the Community Action Agency. And I want to be clear, a lot of people think because it say Hamilton County. That we're in charge of Hamilton County Community Action Agency. We are not in charge of the Hamilton County Community Action Agency, although we try to work with them. One of the recommendations was we bring our money in-house and put it with jobs of family services. So that we could get more money out the door and be able to have the accountability where we would have some, at least some say. And so we, that did happen. And we did get money out. We're getting money out. The five one three relief bus helped with a lot of that. Over four thousand people got help. And my understanding of the administrator. Jeff Aludo mentioned that because we were doing a good job or are doing a good job, that we possibly have some more. Some of these dollars that couldn't be spent in Ohio, other areas. May come here because we have a model of getting it to the people. That doesn't mean that we're perfect. But it says that we're doing a much better job than some of these other agencies. But I wanted to correct that because I know Mr. Harris put out. Hamilton County, and I wanted to correct that, that that is not reflective of Hamilton County. The commission. It may be Hamilton County Community Action Agency that has an independent board and I believe. The city of Cincinnati gave their money to. The Hamilton County Community Action Agency. So you probably want to contact City Hall. But with that, I would just ask if the administrator in his comments today can maybe talk to that about. The good job that our folks are doing and we still got to improve. But the good job we're doing and money that is coming so we can help additional people because we have done. Much better than most places around, most counties around the state of Ohio.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. I do want to acknowledge it's a very sobering and somber moment for the country. Given what's happening at the international level in Ukraine and the dangerous situation there. So it's, it's looming large. I've been listening to the radio all day about. The invasion of Ukraine. And so I do want to just acknowledge that we are in a very tenuous time here as a country and grateful for the leadership at the federal level, trying to. Work with our allies to try to ease tensions at the international level. I too was going to talk about the Colrain hearing. We are very, very grateful to the trustees, to the administrator out there, Jeff Mills, for helping organize. An event that was meant to listen to the concerns and comments of the folks in Colrain. Related to the up and coming regional safety complex that will hopefully be cited in their community. It was a really helpful exchange of ideas and concerns from those residents related to noise and lighting. Landscaping. There were a number of issues that, you know, I think a lot of us would have anticipated. And so the architect. As was said, was able to address some of those and we've got a little bit of work to do there. But I think we have done some due diligence now in Colrain in that community. To make sure that we understand the tone and the tenor related to their ideas for the regional safety complex. That's expected to go up in that community. So and it wouldn't happen, as you say, without partnerships. You know, the sheriff was there, the trustees were there. We had representatives from the federal government, from the state government, county, city. I mean, everybody was there. So I think it was really, really useful exercise. It needed to happen. And so now, you know, after we start to address some of what we heard at that meeting. The next step will be the finances and the financial stack, which is no small feat. And so as has been mentioned, the county through the three of us voting for it. Has put five million aside to help with us, the relocation. The expense though is quite a bit higher than that. So we need to hone in on a figure. That is doable for both the county and the city and then start to hopefully look to our federal partners. We've talked a little bit to some of the folks at the federal level because some of their agencies use this range. The FBI, for instance, uses the range. And so we're wondering if they can be helpful because it's going to be. Better than it is now and it'll be expanded for the use of the local community in addition to the federal government and the county and the city. So. Fingers crossed that we can get that done as quickly as possible so we can move this. Because I agree, you know, we've talked about this for a long time, but this is the closest we've been to achieving this move. So. We just need to get the financing in place. So really, really grateful to the folks in Colrain for making that meeting happen. I also attended the HCDC lunch. Over four hundred business owners were there. All the entrepreneurs and the innovators were in the room. So it was really exciting. And I was just grateful for the invitation to go listen to. What he, you know, we've got our own partnership with them through the small business grants that we have. Pushed out into the community and HCDC has been an invaluable partner. Working with us as we continue to change that criteria to make it easier for small businesses to access the money that we got from the federal government. But HCDC does so much more. And so it was really interesting to hear, you know, what they're doing and all the partnerships they have. And then lastly, I went to an opening last night of the Flatiron Building up in Mount Auburn. The port has played a critical role. In securing this property and the rehab of the property in order to revitalize that part of Mount Auburn. This building evidently has been sitting vacant and stagnant for, I think, twenty years. I'm not sure if I'm overstating that or not, but a long time. And so it's really spectacular. It's a combo of residential and commercial. There's going to be a coffee house and a wine bar in the facility and there is a rat scale. Rat skeller there. I don't know how many of you have been to a rat skeller. I know I have. But it's really, it's a real rat skeller. It's in the basement of the building. It's got stone walls and small tables. It's really interesting. And so it will open soon. And so I think maybe it's a field trip we can take, Madam President. After hours, of course, but it was really impressive and the port did a great job of stabilizing that building and in turn stabilizing that area of Hamilton County. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for attending that event also. I just wanted to make a point of clarity as it relates to those that are listening. The number of businesses that we actually helped, the small businesses. Were fourteen hundred and six small businesses with no duplications. And we spent thirteen point five million dollars through three rounds of applications. To try to help as many small businesses as we could. Fifty percent were minority businesses. Forty nine percent were women businesses and thirty percent were minority and women combined. So we're very proud of that number. We know we probably missed some that even maybe didn't even know about it. Maybe some of the businesses have not been able to survive, but we tried very hard and made it a priority for this board. To try to reach as many businesses as we could. And lastly, I guess I would direct this to Jeff. I did see the diagram of the design for the new bus that we're trying to purchase. Which is almost five hundred thousand dollars for this new bus that will go all over the county. And just wondering if I can have a programmatic summary of what's going to be done on the bus. I know there's a dental chair and there's. Social services on there, but of course, some of my concern is make sure we have confidentiality. When we're in there and make sure we're being safe with the oral health and all those things. I think it's a great thing to do. To be able to get all over the county and to reach the people we may normally would have not seen. Actually, when I was on the TLRC, they were talking about the void in dental health for children specifically. So I'm very interested in the programming that's going to take place on the bus. So our chief, Jeff Aludel, our administrator, why don't I call you chief?
That works. It's fine.
Let me make a comment though. Seriously, when I was at HCDC and I mentioned about our staff and how hard they worked with HCDC. And I saw Holly afterwards. I didn't think she was there. I would have had you guys stand. I just figured you were here still working that you didn't go and things like that. So. I just wanted to apologize. I didn't have you guys stand up. I did mention you, not even knowing you guys were there. For your hard work, working with HCDC because they certainly could not have done it with the small businesses without your hard work. And I wanted to thank you publicly for that.
Sure. Thank you very much. Just a couple of items, Madam President, for by leave today, but first just a few comments. First of all, to Vice President Reese, so a couple of items there. The senior program, we don't have a direct rollout date yet, but we will be coming forward in a staff meeting very shortly to walk through that program with the board and to discuss an exact rollout date at that, at that time. We do want to make sure we continue to ensure that the program that we're rolling out is consistent with, with board policy, but we will bring that before the board and staff meeting very shortly. Also, as it relates to JFS and the, and the release of emergency rental assistance dollars, you're absolutely correct. The county has been doing a great job of. Of getting dollars out to the, the community through that program. As the board will recall, we received in total thirty six million dollars through the two emergency rental assistance programs. One through, part of that through emergency rental assistance one, part of that through emergency rental assistance two, and that's in addition to the CARESAC dollars. That we'd receive that we'd put out into the community as well for, for rental assistance. The board had received a, an update from JFS Director Michael Patton. On our efforts to reduce the backlog associated with that a couple of weeks ago, as you'll recall. With the popularity of this program and the amount of resources we have, we received a huge demand for these, for these dollars. And that had, had developed ultimately a backlog. They are doing a great job of whittling that backlog down. I think at one point in time it was close to two thousand. They're down to about a thousand now in under thirty days. So they're doing a good job of, of sticking to that sixty day plan. To, to reduce that backlog. And with all of that success, both in terms of. The number of individuals reached, the amount of money that has gotten out as quickly as possible. We did get contacted by the state. The state has some additional emergency rental assistance one dollars. That they have not been able to get out fast enough. And so they were looking for partners. So that they could allocate those dollars and not have to have them clawed back by the federal government. And so I believe it's around five million dollars that we're looking to receive, which will help us extend those benefits to Hamilton County residents. And extend that program longer here in Hamilton County. So we plan to come before the board on March eighth. In staff meeting to discuss that and to discuss some criteria that we may want to wrap around those dollars to make sure we're getting those out to the people who, who most need it. And then looking forward to coming back to the board on March tenth with an appropriation resolution so that we can start to get those dollars on the street. I think Vice President Reese had also asked about the senior program. I mentioned we're going to be bringing that back in a staff meeting, but up until that time, if there is any. Additional thoughts on the program, please let me know. We're working very closely with Lisa Webb, our senior policy manager on that and be happy to. To filter some programmatic comments into that before we come back to the board. So. Those are my comments. If we will, Madam President. Be sure to get back with you to discuss a little bit more in detail on the programmatic summary on the, on the five one three relief bus.
Madam President, before we, before we get off of the five one three relief bus. I'll be honest, I'm disappointed that the bus is not done. We got a, this was voted on. I went, I went through a lot and people came and had to testify. Most of the stuff that I present, I always have to do double or triple work to get it passed. We went through a lot of the questions about the five one three relief bus, but I think what would be better. Is to have a town hall meeting now that the state of emergency will be over. Let's have a town hall meeting. We went to seventy eight locations. I'm, oh, I went to seventy four of them. Twenty eight different zip codes and of course, the, the stats speak for themselves, but I think we always want to make sure we're doing something that the people want. Because that's what we are elected to do, not what we personally will, but whatever the people want. And I just think it's, you know, it would be great to, let's get a location. Let's do it in the time when people are available. And let's have a town hall meeting and see if the five one three relief bus was of any help. Because when you look at the, we're getting an entire bus with technology, with, with dental opportunities. We still have COVID situations and we still have the economics, but we don't have a bus. We really don't have programmatic stuff to talk about. I would love to have this bus ready to go. It should have been ready to go in the spring. But I'd love to see the faces, these peoples, let's go out to the community and talk to the people directly. If this was helpful, because when you talk about the bus being a whole bus with all the technology being half a million. But in here, we have voted for six hundred thousand dollars for legal fees, six hundred thousand, no questions. No questions, no clarifications, no holding up, six hundred thousand we paid. To the port authority that we didn't have to pay. The law said we didn't, we weren't on the hook. And I voted no. Now we got a whole bus to help four thousand people already. We didn't got out eighteen million dollars. We didn't got the, the shots. Out there, fifteen hundred people got shots. We went everything from pleaves to avenging. And now he said, well, now we need more information. Well, come on now, what we need information about this six hundred thousand dollars we just gave. To legal fees that we were not held accountable for. But a whole bus? Helping people all over Hamilton County? And we still got questions? Let's have a. And we still got questions? Let's have a town hall. Advertise it, market it, and let's hear from the people. And this is not general fund dollars. This is supposed to be American Rescue dollars. And one of the reasons we get more money from the state is because this bus, before the bus, we were only giving out $5 million. So, no, I'm not done. So my point is, I just want to be clear that, you know, every time I bring something up, it's always, I gotta, I gotta make a correction on you. I gotta make, I got questions. Let's have equal rules. If we don't have no questions on $600,000 to pay to some law firm that we don't have to pay, why all of a sudden we got multiple questions after 4,000 people done got some help? They kept their lights on. They kept a roof over their head. They got the vaccine. So for me, I will stand up for the bus. If we could do 600,000 for legal fees, I'm for a bus that'll be around for a couple of years that could help thousands of people. So I think we need a town hall meeting. Because maybe everybody didn't get a chance to go out to the bus and see and talk to the people. And maybe that will help us as we move forward. But my concern about the bus is that this bus was supposed to be done and on the streets by this spring. That's what I'm concerned about. And I'm getting calls from people, when is the bus coming? But because of the supply chain and all those different things, it got moved back. And we need to be getting a temporary bus like we had this last year so that we don't have a gap in the services to the people. So that's my question for the administrator. I can't get to programming because I don't have a bus. This bus needs to be out this spring, Minority Health Month, some type of bus, helping people like we have been doing all last year. This was a success, and I don't think we should stop things that are successful. I understand this new bus is going to take more time because of the supply chain. But we need something in the gap, and I hope that that is communicated to the people as well. But I think a town hall would be fabulous. Are you done? First of all, I'd like to thank staff for their due diligence as it relates to this new bus and making sure that when we spent $500,000, that we're spending it appropriately, tax money. We have, as a board, know that the 513 relief bus has been extremely effective. We would never agree to buying our own bus if it wasn't. So I thank staff for their due diligence. And as it relates to the programmatic issues on the bus, and I've said before, I looked at the design, and there are four desks right on top of each other with four people sitting there taking applications as it relates to their social service needs and their medical and mental health needs. Just wanted to make sure that the privacy was efficient for the people that come in. Is there a way that we can either schedule it or program it where we can make sure that the privacy is protected? So the question of whether or not a bus is important is not a question for this board because we've approved it and also approved the $500,000 to make it happen. And obviously, we want to make sure that everything is in place and that we want, and I'm still waiting for a key fob for my new apartment after nine months because they don't have the equipment. They don't have, you know, the cars are waiting for stuff. So that happens and we have to wait, but we know it will happen. As it relates to, I will speak only for myself as it relates to a town hall meeting, the necessity of that, for what? We know that it helped. We see the numbers. We hear the people. And so we are, that's why we're spending the money to make it happen. So we can move on to the by leave.
Hi, Madam President, I do have two by leave items. The first item, I believe it says by leave one in your packet. This is resolution in support of 2022 Clean Ohio Conservation Fund grant application to acquire 5929 Winton Road. The board heard about this in staff meeting this past Tuesday. This demonstrates the Board of County Commissioners' support to the Cardinal Land Conservancy for the purchase of land from the Waldorf School through the Clean Ohio Fund to fund a 20-acre nature preserve adjacent to what is Cincinnati's, the city of Cincinnati's last family farm. The resolution, as the board was informed on Tuesday, is a requirement of the Clean Ohio Fund for them to submit this application. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, and I'm glad that we were able to move this quickly. No money involved at all, and we understood the urgency and the purpose of this resolution. Any additional comments on by leave one? I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave one.
Second, Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes, Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leave number two is a resolution approving participation of the county in the governance structure for the region, Region Two, under the Ohio's One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding. This was also a staff meeting discussion item on Tuesday. For those who may be watching at home who were not watching, on Tuesday, One Ohio is the framework of the state and partner local governments governing the distribution of settlement dollars from the litigation against the opioid manufacturers and distributors. The state will be receiving under that settlement over $800 million, at least in the initial settlement. A portion of those dollars will flow through directly to local governments. A portion will be, will go to the state Ohio Attorney General's Office, and another portion, I believe 55%, will be reserved in the statewide foundation for allocation to one of 19 regional foundations set up in the state of Ohio. Hamilton County is its own region as region number two. And agreeing to a governance structure is the first step of a region in being able to appoint a member to the state foundation as well as to begin acquiring dollars through the state foundation, that 55% of the settlement dollars that are reserved there. So an important step to making sure that we acquire the dollars and are able to put in place all of the programming we need to respond to the opioid crisis in a way facilitated by this litigation and settlement. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. And in the process of forming our group for this One Ohio, we would have representatives from every entity and agencies. And so I'm not sure if this is on our website. But we certainly want to, we expanded to two people that have experienced opioid issues, either with their family or personally. And if you're interested in being a part of this board, you can, I'm just not here, but we'll make sure we have this on the website and what we're looking for as it relates to people being involved in this.
And Madam President, I'm sorry, I did not read through the structure of the board. If you'd like me to, I could. We did at the last meeting, and I think there has been at least some minor tweaks to that. So the governance structure consists of the three Hamilton County Commissioners, two members designated by the mayor of the city of Cincinnati, the Hamilton County Coroner, Hamilton County Health Commissioner, City of Cincinnati Health Commissioner, the Hamilton County Mental Health Recovery Services Board President, CEO, Hamilton County Drug Court Judge, Hamilton County Sheriff, the Hamilton County EMA Director, a township trustee, a village mayor, a small city mayor, two individuals with lived experience, an educator, mental health professional, business leader, faith leader, a hospital representative, and the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition serving as a non-voting advisory panel for the governance board.
Thank you very much. I'll open it up for discussion. Vice President Reese.
I think we had a good discussion on Tuesday, and tweaks have been made. I think this is good. I'm ready to move forward when the board presents for the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to staff for working so hard on this. So I do think this is a group that's reflective of the people that have been working in this space of addiction for many, many years, particularly in Hamilton County and in the city of Cincinnati. And we've done our due diligence with the outside, the cities or communities outside the city of Cincinnati and the county as well. One thing I do want to note, though, is that with the individual, we, no names are associated with this. It's just the more general titles or, you know, areas of expertise. And so we do need to get the individual names as quickly as we can because we need to seat the board in order to have a representative appointed to the state and to receive the money, which could come down at any time. And so there is a timing element to this related to those individuals that have not been identified, that are not obvious. For instance, the coroner, it's Lashmi Smarco. We all know that, right? So that name automatically will fill in. However, towards the bottom, when you get to educator, business leader, faith leader, we have to appoint those individuals. And so we had asked, I think the chiefs of staff were brought into this conversation, that maybe we could, as a board, split those up. So everybody get, now we've got an odd number, but that's no big deal. Everybody gets at least two individuals named to these different categories. And so if you would, we do need to get rolling on this. And so if we can identify which category each commissioner is most comfortable appointing an individual to, then we can link those names to these categories and seat the board and have them meet sooner than later. So that's, I know it's kind of inside-baseball and behind-the-scenes work, but we really do need to get it done. So I'll have my chief of staff raked out to the other chiefs to make sure that we firm that up, organize it, and then get those individual people named, hopefully within the next week or two, so that we can have that group move forward and meet.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave two.
Thank you. Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. No further by leaves.
Thanks. You have before you our consent agenda items, items one through 10. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes.
Yes, I have discussion on item number three. Item number three is a janitorial awarding of a contract over $2 million. And I had brought this issue up, obviously, was we're looking to make sure that there is inclusion and outreach. And so I did talk to Administrator Aludo, and I just wanted him to kind of highlight some of the things we tried. I think there are a couple of things. It wasn't that you had to do all the buildings. They did some, just some of the different things that they were able to do. And then within this contract, there still may be some opportunity for small business to participate if they didn't know about this.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, Vice President Reese. Yeah, so this is the janitorial contract for the county. We did make an explicit intentional effort to, at the request of the board, for some of these types of contracts, to make sure that we're not just bidding them out holistically because we know that with some contracts, it may be difficult for small minority vendors to bid on, if you don't have the capacity to bid on the entire slate of work. So we did, number one, we had a pre-bid meeting. The Office of Economic Inclusion and Equity, and Robert Bell, was included in that pre-bid to explain this, to do outreach to various vendors. And we also structured the bid package specifically to encourage work on individual buildings. So we wanted to make sure people knew it was acceptable, okay, and encouraged to submit just on a single building. If we have a small contractor who might, you know, be trying to get their foot in the door, but they just don't have the capacity to bid on all of them, that they could bid on a single building. And if they're cost-effective, we would award the bid in that manner. There is a 15% small business subcontractor goal in the contract. So I'll follow up on that with the board and see how we're doing towards that end. So there still may be opportunity for small businesses to participate. On this particular package, though, even with that, we wound up receiving two bids on it. Despite all of that outreach and activity, we still only received two bids. So I think another example of where we need to continue to do outreach in the community and in the industry to make sure we are prepping firms for how to do business with county and when these opportunities come available, et cetera. But on this one, we did, definitely did hear the board's policy direction, tried to put some things in place. Can't say we're as successful as we would have liked in terms of the results, in terms of total bidders. We do think we do have ultimately a good contractor that we're going to be working with. But we would like to see more participation from the small minority business community on these types of contracts in the future, and we'll work towards that.
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight those efforts, and certainly we've got other efforts to do. And then also the seriousness to those small businesses out there. We are serious about doing business. I remember at the state, when I first got there, people wouldn't bid because they said, oh, you're not serious. You just want to take my bid, because that does happen. You just want to take my bid and check the box and say, oh, we had these people participate. But then once they saw that the state at that time, we are serious, we started getting more people. So just wanted to say that out there, anybody who's watching, that the county were serious about this. This is not a check-the-box exercise. And hopefully, as we continue to do these things and advertise them and get them out, we'll get more people looking into this. Because I know I had some people call me about a janitor. I didn't know if we had those type of things. But I did send it over. Everyone who called, I sent it over to Robert Bell. But that was a thing that I've heard from a lot of minority businesses is that sometimes it's just an exercise, and they have to choose where they bid because they don't have time to be just to be checking the box. So just want to reiterate that we're serious, and there are serious opportunities here in the county. And I appreciate the efforts that you all made. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam President, just a quick follow-up. I just want to thank Joe Williams, our Purchasing Director, Ralph Lenny, Robert Bell. You know, these are things that, Vice President Reese, you've talked about the DNA of the organization. You know, these are activities that department heads have taken on their own to follow board policy direction and do. It doesn't require significant follow-up and keeping the finger on it from the administration. The department heads hear the direction, and they go off and do it, and will continue to do that and hopefully continue to be more and more successful as it relates to attracting those vendors that make up a diverse vendor pool for the county work.
Thank you. And I also know, not several, but a few African-American janitorial services. And I know we want them to reach out to us. But as we reach out to them, I'm thinking like the African-American Chamber, they have services listed under certain areas. And I don't know if we reached out to the African-American Chamber or not, but they have some.
We do typically. I'll work with Robert, though, make sure that on this particular industry segment, that if we haven't done it, that we continue to do it.
Great. And as far as the vendors on our floor who clean, I was thinking about, I have the 513 relief card. We made them in Spanish. And I was thinking, wow, she comes in here every day. I never have given her a card. And I remember I took a little Spanish, so I was practicing, you know, when she came in. And I said, hold on one, and I said, and I handed it to her. So familia, which is family, I hope. And I said, and amigos, and your friends. So she was really excited about, because usually when she leave, did I say it right, is family and friends? Don't tell me. But anyway, yeah. So I gave her a stack. I'm thinking, all this time, I missed her. And I'm sure she has a, you know, a group or whatever that she's around. And usually she'll go straight to the next office and empty or whatever. And she had a little gap in there, kind of looking at the cards. So they were very helpful, I'm sure, for her, and she'll pass those out. So with no further discussion.
Just a little bit about the idea of the contracts that the county does. You know, we've always had this frustration, at least since I've been here, that we don't always have the kind of diverse pool to choose from that we would like. And I think it's a two-way street, really. I think some of it is that we have not done a good job as the county in letting people know we are open for business for everybody. And the other piece is that making sure that people know that we're sincere in that. They believe it, and they take the time to, you know, respond to the RFP. So we are getting better. You know, Robert Bell has done a lot of work to create relationships that we are trying to capitalize on it and make sure that we're doing this work. But the disparity study will obviously be very helpful in this space. So I appreciate the efforts of staff. We did hire someone recently to make sure that the Office of Economic Inclusion and Equity is making sure that the internal processes of the county are doing exactly what we all wanted to do, which is make sure vendors feel welcome to respond and then are successful. And if we need to split up contracts, then that's something that we're open to doing. So we're getting there, but I really hope the disparity study leaps us over some of the challenges we're continuing to experience here and gets us to a place where we actually see the results more quickly once that's in place. So appreciate the comments on this, though. It's always an interesting conversation as we continue to move forward at a slow pace, albeit. But we're, I think we'll get there pretty quickly when the disparity study comes out.
And the strategy to break it down, as you were saying, Jeff, because that $2 million number can be very intimidating when you read about the contract being open. So that's a great strategy to use. Okay, with no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve items one through 10.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you. And just a final word of prayer for those that was mentioned earlier, those people and families and militaries. those people and families and military that are involved in the conflict over at Ukraine and Russia. We will be thinking about them and we hope that everything works out for all of us. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.